This is the zoning board of appeals meeting August 6, 2020. Two items on the executive session, the first is approval of the minutes of July 9, 2020. Entertaining motion to approve those minutes, please.
So moved.
Brian or Terry?
Terry.
Thank you.
Jane seconds.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None, motion carries unanimously. Second is approval of secretary's fees. Entertaining motion to approve.
So moved. Jane so moves.
Thank you Jane, is there a second?
Eight seconds.
Thank you. Any discussion? Or none, I'll bring it to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, can carries. First, I apologize for the little delay for everyone to get going, but luckily the meeting shouldn't take too long because we had three matters that were originally scheduled which have been continued. And Terry Keegan, just so you know, it's number one, number two, and number 11 have been continued.
Okay, thank you.
In light of COVID-19 pursuant to the executive order 7B, Governor Lamont, the town is conducting this meeting via teleconference. There are people that are going to be calling in. We'll afford everyone an opportunity, so please be patient. I will call upon people to ask questions from the board. I will then ask for input from the public as to in favor or opposed. And I will give the person who's applying an opportunity to address any comments and opposition. We did receive a lot of materials and things have been posted to the site. And we also, the board members received all of the applicants' packages prior, well, prior to this hearing. So first, I'm going to call to order zoning board of appeals, August 6, 2020. When I call a matter, I'm going to be actually calling what's listed on our docket. And that's very important, that that be clear and it's properly recorded. So whoever is on the call, and if you're not speaking, and initially it's going to be me only speaking, then it will be the applicant who will be speaking. And then anyone in favor or anyone opposed. Everyone else, you need to mute. I will then ask the board members if they have questions of the applicant. And the board members, you obviously can unmute yourself when you're going to be asking questions. It's very important that everyone mutes because sometimes there's a lot of feedback and it's hard for the board members to hear the application. And I thank all of the people that are interested, whether you're the applicant in favor or against us, you want us to hear everything that is said today. So after a matter is called, I will invite the applicant to unmute yourself and begin your presentation. At that time, if there's something that you want us to consider, you can refer to it. If it's already in the package that was provided to us, or if it's on a screen share, if you're able to do that, you're welcome to do that. I know sometimes that's difficult, but just let us know. We're just going to have to take our time to make sure that your application is presented. And after the applicant's presentation, I will invite or allow anyone who's interested to speak at that time. I will first ask if there's anyone in favor of the application. I will give enough time for the call-in people to voice their support. I will do the same thing for anyone who opposes that application and give you time, whether you're on our actual call or video wise, or whether you are a call-in, I'll provide you time to do that. Anyone who wants to speak needs to provide their name and address before beginning talking. And for that matter, even if it's the applicant responding to questions, unless it's clearly obvious that you're talking, if sometimes there's a little back and forth, please have your name, say your name first before you begin talking. And that obviously goes to the board members as well, so we can have a clear record as to who was talking. If there's any opposition, I will allow the applicant an opportunity to address those comments and opposition. That is a time for the applicant to only address the comments and opposition. It's not a time to restate your application. So please, you know, address the comments accordingly and just kind of rebut what was said in the opposition comments. The meeting's being taped, and that's why I've been giving a lot of instructions, trying to make it go as smooth as possible. So we need to make sure that we have only one person speaking at a time so the tape and the recording can be understood down the road if it's necessary. Anyone does speak, like I already said, give your name and address. We welcome the comments of anyone who's interested in a particular application. However, I will exercise my right as chairman to restrict your comments if they are too far off the point for the zoning board of appeals consideration. The applicants and interested persons can remain after the public hearing because what we'll do is, we probably won't need to take a break. If we do need to take a break, it'll be a short one, but we will reconvene immediately and we'll be voting on everything that goes forward today. There are five members of the zoning board of appeals that will be voting on each application that goes forward. In order for your application to be granted, you need a super majority. You need at least four yes votes in favor of your application. If it is a, just a super majority, if it's a simple majority, you are, your application has been denied. If you cannot stay for our meeting after the public hearing or discussion after the public hearing, you can always call zoning office tomorrow to find out, tomorrow later to find out what happened. If an application for a waiver of zoning regulations is granted, it will not be valid until it's recorded on the land records. Therefore, you must bring or send a check in the amount of $60 made payable to the town of Fairfield and bring it or send it to the zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting, which will allow for proper recording of the notice and filing. Any waiver which involves construction, whether it is new dwelling and efficient or alteration, will require an as-built before the town can issue a certificate of zoning compliance or a certificate of occupancy. We'll now go into the call for each of the matters. And it's number one on the general docket, 240 South Street. That has been continued to the September docket. Number two, 90 Mill Hill Road, that has also been continued to the September docket. Number three, 1149 Fairfield Beach Road. Map 184, parcels 66 and 214. Petition of Joseph A. Graziano for variance of the zoning regulations in section 11.11.2 to reduce the side setback from five feet, proposing 3.7 feet. Permission to construct an elevated deck for a generator premises D D zone. Mr. Graziano, I think I saw you on the call, are you still there? Yes, sir. Unmute yourself and you can begin your application, sir.
Yes, thank you. So this is Joseph Graziano, 1149 Fairfield Beach Road. And yeah, my understanding is that this is a setback issue. We are interested in installing a 22 KW natural gas powered backup generator to our, onto the west side of our home. There's a setback issue there. And the, so that was the reason for the application. The hardship definitely, it's a combination of things. And we've had generators in the past in different places where I've lived, so we've enjoyed the benefit, particularly now during pandemic. And my wife does all of her business now via teleconferencing. And I also myself relies on teleconferencing exclusively for my practice. And my, and I'm also a professor at Fairfield University. And we've been doing a lot of things online as well. So we were just concerned about the continuity of services that we can provide. And as a backup generator, we thought would help ensure that.
All right. And I saw the letters from both neighbors, Mr. Graziano and Gepac, that you provided. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Graziano?
Yes.
Yes, Jane, go ahead.
So the two letters, one is from the Cobb family, which I see is on the opposite side of your house. But the neighbor that would be most affected by the deck, is that Mr. Galaro's? Because it doesn't match the name of the property owner on the survey, so I'm confused. So who is that?
My understanding, well, I know that is Antonio Galaro, and he is the owner of 1157 Fairfield Beach Road, which is the next house on the west side.
So who is then Bonanju Associates on the survey next door to you? That's not, is that just the name of the?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I can't answer that question. I was aware, my understanding is that is, that's Antonio Galaro's. He's the owner of that property.
He's the owner, not the tenant?
He's not the tenant, no, he owns the property. He has been renting out the property, yeah.
So I guess the property, the name on the deed must be not his, this LLC, I guess. Okay.
Sorry, can I interject? Jane, what was the name that you see on the survey?
B O N A N J U.
Yeah. That's the previous owner. That's the previous owner.
Okay, thank you.
Just to let you know, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions for Mr. Graziano on the board?
No, that was it.
Don't hear anything else about other questions? Anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone on the call-in in favor of the application? Okay. Is there anyone opposed to the application? Anyone on the call-in opposed to the application? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Graziano. That matter is now closed for public hearing. The next item is number four, 189 Adley Road. Map 49, parcel 34, petition of Marislov Gopin for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4 to reduce the side setback from 15 feet, proposing 14.7 feet. And section 5.2.5 to increase the maximum model lot coverage from 15%, proposing 17.76%. Permission to allow a shed and covered porch to remain. Work already done, premises R3 zone.
And Matt is- Chairman, he was the only person I did not get a response in my morning email that he would be on. He is also in a part of New York town that I know is completely out of power. So that could be a possibility as well.
Okay, so for the moment, we will pass that. Will, can you just remind me?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes. Hello, can you hear me? I'm on the phone line.
He's on the audio.
Oh, great, okay.
We don't have internet, so I'm on the-
Marislov?
Oh, can you, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. All right, I just made the call, you can begin your application for, to allow the shed and covered porch to remain for Adley. Tell us what, tell us what you would like us to do and why. Sir, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yep.
Tell us about your application.
You may be having difficulty hearing us.
Mr. Graziano, could you mute your button you keep on popping up as? All right, Matt, can we try to get him if we can get a better connection? And we'll pass it, and when he's available, to let us know. If you could give him a call or somehow get in touch with him. And we'll take it up when he can get a better connection. I'm going to move on to the next one, and we'll come back to 189 Adley Road once we are, once we are ready to go with that. The next item is number five.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Can you hear me? This is Chairman Coin.
Yes.
Can you hear me? You got to, you're going to have to talk louder or get headphones.
I do have headphones, I'm speaking loudly. Can you hear me?
A little bit louder, pretend I'm on the other side of the room.
Can you hear me, can you hear me now?
Pretend I'm 20 feet away. Yes, that's good, talk that loud, you can yell, don't worry.
Okay, okay. So this is Minoslok, Dovin, 189 Adley Road, applying for variance on existing structures. Being done in a good faith, that is no problem. I did not know the shed was built over the setback line. And patio was constructed as planned, on original plans. And it surprised to me that it counts as a square footage for the building. So I would like to keep it that way. I really believe that is no trouble to anyone. You can hear me, okay?
Yes, we can, and you spoke to your neighbors, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Govin?
No. No.
Terry or Brian, speak up if you have questions?
No questions by Terry Keegan.
Questions. No questions.
Okay, all right. There are no questions, all right. Sir, is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application? I mean, anyone on call-in, okay? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? Anyone on call-in in opposition? Okay, no opposition. Sir, thank you very much. We'll, we've concluded this hearing. When we're done with the public, all the matters, we will be discussing this matter as others and voting on them, sir. So you can remain on the call-in, or you can call zoning and find out later, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next matter is number five. 392 South Benson Road, map 139, parcel 420. Petition of Heather Petch for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4 to reduce the minimum required street line setbacks from 30 feet, currently 24.3 feet, proposing 18.3 feet. Permission to construct a one-story, one-car garage premises, a zone. It is Heather or her agent on the call.
Yeah.
Heather, I see you, you need to unmute yourself. They're unmuted, okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead, you can start your application.
Sorry, sorry.
Miss Petch, hold up one second, hold up one second.
Okay.
Please enter job cost code followed by the pound or hash sign.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, this is to get everyone else muted, so there's no interference.
You entered star.
Okay. Can you hear me? Because I'm getting feedback on my phone. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
So you should either be using just your phone or your computer audio, but not both.
Okay, so I just switched-
So either hang up the phone and use just your, yep. So if your computer audio, we can hear you through your computer audio. So just hang up the phone, because you shouldn't have both on, that's what's, that's what's causing the feedback.
Okay, so can you hear me now on my computer audio?
Yes, perfectly.
Okay, great. I'm sorry about that. So I've lived here for 20 years, and the first sort of rain-only event that flooded my driveway, similar to the pictures that you've seen here, was in 2006, and it was shortly after they repaved South Benson Road. We weren't home at the time of that heavy rain, but afterwards, Chris Rogers came out from the town and looked around and noticed that there was a flat spot at the end of our driveway that tends to slow the flow of the water towards the drain basin. And over the years, I've taken several pictures and videos of how when it rained really hard, the water coming from the north rushed completely over the basin that services my house. The water used to come around the corner from Judson, trying to go north, and then it would completely wash over, push it all south. It would pool to the center line in front of my driveway. And because I have a below-grade driveway, then it all comes down. And in about 60 seconds, it floods 12 to 18 inches and then gets in my garage and in my basement. So the worst three events over the past few years were September and October of 2018. I flooded twice horribly. Those are the pictures you're seeing that I submitted with my application. Within a two-week period, had to have it professionally cleaned and sanitized. I've lost two generators that are stored in my garage, a couple of bikes, and some other tools that were stored on the shelf below the workbench. For me, flood insurance doesn't kick in unless my adjacent property owners are affected. But because no one else has this below-grade driveway, I haven't been able to utilize my flood insurance. And the town, while they have an obligation to try and fix the problem, and they did put in a new drain basin, and it has helped, but I did flood again after that. I just, I need to have some assurance that I'm not going to flood anymore. And the town is not responsible for replacing the property that I've lost in the garage. In addition, when you look during a heavy rain, there's so much more water on my side of the street than the other side of the street. And it's also my understanding that the main basin is compromised by an aquarium pipe that goes right through the middle. And I've watched this numerous times, taken numerous videos. And if it's only heavy rain, the drain at the end of my driveway is fully sufficient, and I have a check valve on it to prevent backflow. But it is only when the water crests from the street that I have a flooding issue. So what I would like to do, I guess you have my application, is lose the below-grade garage, you know, close it up, fill, and then build a new garage immediately to the right at the street.
Okay. Okay. And does the board have any questions for Miss Petch?
Also, just so you know, these floods put about 12 to 18 inches of water in my garage.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Have you talked to town engineering about how to regrade your property while you're doing this work? Or have you talked to anybody about regrading?
Um, yes, and with my survey, there's a proposal for new grading, and I've talked to Brent, and the amount of fill, and Huntington did the fill plan, and the amount of fill is a conforming amount. But I'm, I wanted to get the permission to build the new garage in addition to closing up the existing one and bringing up the grade. So he's done that calculation and that drawing.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, just a point of curiosity. So you're going to be pulling out the shrubs immediately to the right of your garage, all that landscaping, and that's where the garage is going?
Yes. And then it will come slightly farther forward. That's, I think, the variance part of this.
Gotcha.
And also, I'm going to phase it. I'm going to close it up first, because hurricane season is upon us. It's hard to get someone to, you know, do the whole thing. And I know I need the drawings and the architectural ones. So I really, I just, and actually, it has been passed away in the middle two floods in 2018. And so I just can't do it here alone anymore. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm sorry, I think I was cut off when I was asking a question before. My, things got a little blippy. Are you still there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was there.
So just to continue what I asked you earlier, the grading that's shown on the survey is not the final grading, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, because otherwise, if this was the final grading, you'd still have water pooling up in front of the old garage door. So I assume you wouldn't grade differently.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other, any other questions? Other questions in the board? Anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Anyone from the call-in? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? Any opposition? All right, thank you, Miss Petch. This hearing on this matter is now closed. We'll be taking this up at the end of the public hearing.
Thank you.
Item is number six, 80 Newton Street. Map 139, parcel 376, petition of Ariel Johnson and Max Dover for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4 to reduce the rear and sum of two sideline setbacks from 30 feet and 25 feet, currently 47.2 feet and 16.6 feet, proposing 29.1 feet and 22 feet. End section 5.2.5, increased lot coverage from 20%, currently 8.2%, think 23.5%. Petition to construct a second floor in rear two-story addition, open front porch. And I believe I saw Mr. Dover, there you are, and Miss Ariel, Miss Johnson.
Oh, yeah, they're on, I'm Michael Becker.
Oh, Michael, you're presenting, oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm Michael Becker. I'm representing Max Dover and Ariel Johnson. And technically, actually, the current owner of the home, Linda Nair. The Ariel and Max are in, under contract, and will be closing on the property on August 12th, next Wednesday. But we do have a letter in from Linda Nair authorizing me to represent her as well as them at this matter.
The, the property was built in 1941, so it is pre-existing.
Many of the zoning changes that occurred, even the early mid 50s, as you will note, it's a totally non-conforming property from setbacks, lot size for an A-zone. And what they are trying to do is tastefully increase the property, the footage of the house with rear addition. And there's been a lot of thought put into this. The house is a Cape style, although it does have a butt-out room in the front that's like an office place in there now. And what we did is, we're going to keep the elevation on the home at the same roof line as the existing Cape is. It's not a home where we're trying to go up at the full second level, plus roof pitch and everything. And we also have made an allowance on one side for elevating air conditioning compressors. And there's a generator on the property already, which is going to get relocated onto that platform. So that's what you see on the left side next to the addition. If you look at the, so the setback, because of the non-conforming lot, I don't even think it has, meets the square requirement. But if you look at the setbacks, that where we are with the addition, a lot of the initial setbacks were less because up in the front corners. But if you look at the setbacks on the addition, although we are still under, I believe, what we are required to have, it's still a fair distance off of the property lines. And also, if you look at the rear setback, because of the odd-shaped lot, it's actually a very deep backyard, although shaped back as a pie. But if you look at where the setback corner is, and then if you look at all the extra space in the back, it leaves a very substantial rear yard area. A couple of things I would note, Max and Ariel went- Max and Ariel went around and were very diligent about meeting their new neighbors and have significant sign-offs with approvals. And unless we have any other people showing up today that contest it, I think everybody was in favor. If you look at Newton Street in general, I actually lived on Turf Road for 22 years, so I've seen some of this progress. Had seen it. I sold the house subsequently a while back. But they, I believe the board would have had to give variances to other properties on there as well in the past due to the nature of the different lots and the age of when the homes were built to where they are today. And also, one other thing which the renderings really don't show is that the exterior of the home is going to be completely stripped of siding, new roof. There is a mention about a new front porch, and it's going to make it, the roof lines will make it way more attractive than it is now. So I think it's going to benefit the neighborhood. The new siding, it's going to look sort of following the scheme of a Nantucket kind of home look. That's their taste. And that's going to be carried through with the exterior siding treatments, windows, what have you. I think that's basically it, unless you have questions.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Becker? Jane shaking your head, no. No one else is unmuting themselves to ask questions? All right, no questions. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? I'm sure Max and Ariel spoke their own application. Has anyone else? Okay. Has anyone in opposition to the application? Anyone on the call-in in opposition? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Becker. And this one is closed, and we'll be taking up this during our discussions and voting later.
Thanks, everyone.
Number seven, 164 Warwick Avenue, petition of James Patrignelli for a variance of the zoning regulations, Section 5.2.5 to increase the maximum lot coverage from 20%, currently 20%, proposing 21.26%. Permission to construct an open front porch premises A-zone. Is that James there? Okay, unmute. Very good, James.
Thank you. This is James and Samantha Patrignelli, 164 Warwick Avenue. Basically, what we're asking is to cover an existing patio. We have a raised patio that, at the highest point, is two feet high. And at the lowest point, right over our driveway, is 1.5 inches high. It's made of bluestone. It's about 15 feet long. We have three children that are now home all the time, and they find themselves falling or jumping off of it. And we want to make sure that's a safe place in the front yard. And we propose building a porch with fencing around, over, a porch over it with fencing around it. Can I serve?
And I see that you spoke to the neighbors. Any questions for the applicants on the board? Yes, Jane?
Just looking, hi. The difference between the existing conditions and the proposed on the lot coverage, is that because the roof is going to be out beyond where the outline of the patio is now?
No, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if the, back in 2004 when the house was redone, if they, the patio was, the plans were submitted before the patio was completed. But it seems to be a little bit of confusion there. But we had the survey come back out, show that the porch is there. And really, it's just, I'm sorry, the patio is there and it's just putting, hovering over it.
But, okay, it doesn't quite, I mean, I'm quibbling over something that's mightier, but I'm just curious. It says the existing conditions, you're at 20%, and you're asking for 21.26%. I'm trying to figure out why it's bigger. Then what's there?
We're just, we're just putting a roof over existing patio.
All right, okay.
But yeah, that we know, there would be no build-outs for extending anything.
I guess it's a question for your surveyor, but that's okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Any other questions? Not hearing any other questions. So then it was to speak in favor of the application? Anyone on the call-in list? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? Anyone on calling in in opposition to the application? Okay, hearing nothing. 164 Warwick Ave. The application is closed, the hearing's closed on that matter. We'll take that up shortly. Next item is number eight, 44 Marnie Avenue, Map 31, Parcel 119, petition of Kevin and Jennifer Abees for a variance of the zoning regulation, Section 5.2.4 to reduce the minimum required sideline setback from 20 feet for enclosed porches currently 18.9 feet, proposing 16.9 feet. Permission to rebuild existing front porch premises A-zone. The applicants?
Yes, I'm here. This is Kevin Ayers.
Okay, Kevin, yes, there it is. Oh, it's spelled differently on the, on the call.
A Y B E S.
Mr., yeah, it's A Y B E S, but not A Y E R S. Okay. Mr. Ayers, go ahead.
Sure. Our application is for a variance. The front of our house has a small landing in front of the entry door, which is in terrible condition. So our intention is to rebuild that and slightly increase the size just to, so it's a little bit more proportionate to the house, and it'd be a little bit more cozy to perhaps put a chair on. And you could, you know, people coming to our house wouldn't have to step down onto the stairs to allow the door to open. The lot is non-conforming, so the essence of our hardship is that where the house is in proportion to the boundary lines essentially requires the variance. We're slightly increasing the size, but I don't think it's enough to need an additional lot coverage variance because of rounding, and it's, we're not making it that much bigger. We submitted the plans, signatures from all of our neighbors. It's very much with the look and feel of our neighborhood. It's really not going to be an enclosed porch, per se, but it'll have cover and, you know, some posts to support the overhead roof area. So that's the, that's our proposal. That's what we have in mind. And we appreciate your consideration for the variance.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Any questions for Mr. Ayers? Hearing no questions. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? Call in? Okay, hearing none. This hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Ayers. We'll take this up shortly. Number nine?
Sounds good. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yep. 1600 Melville Avenue, Map 46, Parcel 157, petition of Glenn Fast for a variance of the zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4 to reduce the street line and sideline setbacks from 40 feet and 15 feet, currently 30.1 feet and 7.8 feet, proposing 30.1 feet to the house and 23.9 feet to the porch and 7.8 feet to the sideline, and Section 5.2.5 to increase total lot coverage from 15%, currently 13.1%, proposing 15.3%. Permission to construct a second floor addition and open front porch premises R3 Zone. And I think is, is there, Ms. Miller, you're presenting this as the agent?
Hi, yes. So I'm Jessica Miller. And my husband, Jeff Bickel. We are the future owners of the house. My uncle is currently the trustee of the house, and we are closing on Monday, the 10th. So what we are proposing here and the variances that we're looking for, it's a non, it's existing non-conforming structure. So the variances for the setback and the, from the street line and the sidelines and the total lot coverage are the three things we're going for, two of which are already non-conforming. So the setback from the sideline is not going to be changing. We're going to be building on the current structure and foundation, adding a second level. But the only thing we're looking to add on is the front porch. So although the structure is already non-conforming, we're looking to do the front porch, which then also would increase our lot size from 13.1 to 15.3. And then, as you know, for this area, the minimum lot size is supposed to be 20,000 square feet. We're less than 50% of that. So that's kind of our hardship here. We have talked to all of our neighbors. We had the mail-in signatures on the petition. And a lot of feedback that we got back from them is they're really excited that we're doing something with the house. All the houses are absolutely beautiful on the street, and this is kind of the ugly duck lane. So they're really excited for work to be done here. We appreciate your time and your feedback.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Miller? Didn't you recently have some damage from the storm?
Yes, our neighbors actually called and also got text messages from them that a limb had fallen on the house, but it didn't appear to have any damage. So we're probably going to go by it or just check it out. But they all said it looks good.
It looked like it's a rest count. I saw it yesterday.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Jane, did you have a question? I didn't, okay. Anyone in opposition? Anyone to call in? All right. Hearing none. Matter is closed. We'll be taking it up shortly. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Next item on the agenda is number 10, 2101-2102 Fairfield Beach Road, Map 234, Parcel 71, petition of 2101-2102 Fairfield Beach Road LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, Section 11.1.4.1 to allow a detached accessory structure to contain finished floor area with plumbing fixtures and heat, and Section 11.1.4 to reduce the setback from Pine Creek from 10 feet, currently 4.9 feet, proposing 3.9 feet. Permission to construct a detached FEMA-compliant garage with finished upper floor premises BD Zone. Tony Fallon, you're presenting, correct? Unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you've been cutting in and out, I've noticed, with service. So I'll just keep an eye on it. So I might, I'll pick the heads up if we don't hear you.
I have done my audio through the phone, so hopefully you'll find that to be good, even though you may not see my face, which is not usually a big deal anyway. So, anyway, good afternoon to everyone, and I appreciate your time today. We're here representing 2101-2102 Fairfield Beach Road LLC. The members of that LLC are the owners of the property, Bruce and Lily Bloomingdale, who I know are on the call here as well. The property is located in the Beach District. It's improved with a two-story dwelling located on the portion of the lot that is adjacent to Long Island Sound.
Attorney Fallon, hold up one second. I'm hearing like a buzzing sound. I can make out your words, but I'm not sure everyone else can. Now, when you, when the mute comes up, we obviously can't hear you. I don't know if you can switch over to computer. It might be a little smoother connection.
I can try, although I thought this might be better. Can you hear me now? Okay?
It's still the same. It's a very scratchy.
All right, let me, let me go over then to the computer, I mean, to the computer if I can.
No, we're not hearing that.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, that's, that's much clearer than before, yes.
Well, there you go about not using the telephone, maybe. I'm better using this. So let me just briefly start over. The property is located at 2101 and 2102 Fairfield Beach Road. It's located in the Beach District. It is owned by Bruce and Lily Bloomingdale, who are on the call at the meeting today. The property is improved at this point with a beautiful new home under construction, which is adjacent to Long Island Sound. And there is, as you probably know from your site visit, an existing garage located adjacent to the Pine Creek portion of the property. Mr. and Mrs. Bloomingdale have constructed and are constructing, I think, what's going to be and what the neighbors find to be a very attractive and aesthetically pleasing and zoning compliant house on the property. Now they wish to do the garage. The existing, as you saw, is dilapidated. It's not FEMA-compliant. And as a practical matter, it's not functional and has a very, a very negative aesthetic impact with regard to the overall property and neighborhood. We are seeking permission to construct a new garage structure on the same footprint as the existing structure to be demolished, as shown on the plans that we've been submitted and that were paired by Dennis Peters, our architect. The garage will be very attractive, I think, aesthetically, and have a very positive impact on the character of the neighborhood. We are also requesting, as I'll elaborate on, that the garage be allowed to have a home office above, including a half bath. As a background with regard to that point, both Mr. and Mrs. Bloomingdale are lawyers by training. Mr. Bloomingdale currently advises numerous tech startups with regard to raising capital and also acts as an outside general counsel. Both Mr. and Mrs. Bloomingdale are also active in investing in businesses and other projects. So these endeavors do require both of them on a daily basis to consult with clients by. So as with a lot of other properties that you've seen on this portion of Fairfield Beach Road and other portions of Fairfield Beach Road, we're looking to create a separate and very simple workplace that will allow the Bloomingdales to have a private area to tend to their daily business obligations. This entire concept, as I said before, is nothing new on the beach. And under carefully-conditioned circumstances, it's been granted previously for such accessory structures. Our clients, my clients, do not see customers face-to-face. The basis of their work and the use of their home office is going to be limited to phone conferences and virtual meetings and the like. In order to make that space functional and really usable, we're requesting the allowance to have heat and also a half-bath to accommodate all of it the same footprint of the existing garage. We are seeking a variance of Section 11.14 to reduce the minimum setback for the structure from, to 3.9 feet. Now, the existing garage and the proposed garage are going to be built on exactly the same footprint, and that is at 4.9 feet from Pine Creek. As I point out in my material, however, we've been having discussions and receiving counsel from a licensed structural engineer. And there is a possibility that the Bloomingdales will want to replace the existing bulkhead adjacent to Pine Creek. And if we do that, and in so doing that, the bulkhead will be brought if and when it's replaced. To accommodate that potential eventual out, eventuality, we ask for the variance to Section 3.9 feet to accommodate any future rotation of the bulkhead. But again, I would want to stress that the garage itself as the existing, if somewhat dilapidated, structure. To the variance of Section 11.4.1, as I said, we are asking for that variance so that we can create this small office area above the provisions of a half with a half-bath. We're going to make sure that that structure basically will comply with all other provisions of the regulations and those pertaining to, including those pertaining to height and that's FEMA-compliant. Thank you. So what are the legal underpinnings here? And how do the facts relate to that? As you all know, As you all know pursuant we are proposing will substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan. The zoning is a substantial hardship. Let me address those in order. With regard to the first aspect of the test, I cite in my material the Egan case, wherein the court made clear that if the use to be made of the overall property after the variance is granted is a permitted use in the zone, then the first part of the test is met. In the present case, there's not going to be any change in the historic use of the property as a residence, and the existing dilapidated accessory structure will be replaced by a new FEMA compliant aesthetically pleasing one. We know this is going to have a very positive impact on the entire neighborhood. I think also in that regard, so do the neighbors. I think the neighbors are very pleased with the new structure that the Bloomingdales have prepared. And emails, an email chain David LaFredo and Mr. Morrison have been made aware of the plans. They reviewed the plans according to the application dating adjacent property owners. I also submitted today, and I believe it was submitted independently from the adjacent property owner at is the in case, and would ask if you look at the, was the owner of the property, the client, Mr. Rizzio and Mr. LLC, the principal, Mr. Scott Lipstrow is the owner of that property. It's in a letter dated August sixth, half of that adjacent property owner supporting our occasion. I also submitted today a letter from me, also dated August sixth, expressing our client's support for item number eleven on your agenda. That is ten eighty seven dash ten eighty eight Fairfield Beach Road. Because of a family obligation, Attorney Rizzio could not be here today. Otherwise, these two applications would have gone forward together. But I did indicate that I would present this letter today that confirms our support and non-opposition to his application. And I also confirmed to him pursuant to his request make a statement for this record that we support that application and will do so once at your next hearing on September three. But from the standpoint of the statutory requirements, we have reached out to our neighbors, and they're all pleased that that dated garage will be replaced by the plans as drawn by as to the second portion of that, that is the hardship portion. It has been long settled as far as the setback variance that the historic location of a pre-existing nonconforming structure on a lot creates a proper basis for a finding of hardship. That's what we have here. The new proposed garage will in fact be located on the same footprint as the existing structure and will in fact ensure there'll be no increase in nonconformities from what has historically existed. As I indicated before, we are taking the opportunity to ask you for a one foot variance of that setback in the event it should become necessary or advisable to replace the bulkhead. With regard to the variance of section eleven point one point four point one, as I point out in my material, the purpose and the intent of that section of the zoning regulations that an accessory dwelling in the Beach District will not be utilized as a residence violation of the provisions of the regulations. In that regard, I wouldn't put the plan makes for any cook or sleeping facilities. And in addition, only requests approval of a half bath with no shower facilities. Has looked at in the past when looking at this in the context of Fairfield Beach Road. In addition, I think that isn't what the person intends of the regulations. It is all indicate again for this record certainly agree to a condition that the structure will be maintained as approved and not utilized, converted, or occupied as a dwelling in the future. In that regard, and generally, the only other thing I'd want to say is you did a couple of letters this morning with regard to the project support for taking the time to share that with you. I did want to touch on two things with regard to those letters. By, with regard to the bulkhead, as my application material indicates, we did hire and retain a structural engineer. And if his ultimate determination is that the bulkhead should be replaced, we wanted to anticipate that application, and as I've said, we did so. Since filing the application, we received input from the structural engineer that the bulkhead is functioning properly and has that issue remains under review and consideration by the engineer. The Bloomingdales remain committed to taking whatever actions the structural engineer recommends with regard to the bulkhead, including any necessary repairs or improvements or its replacement. But for now, we'd like not to have a condition of approval imposed that would mandate and require the replacement of the until and unless we have some indication with finality from the structural engineer that that is necessary and advise that as a condition. Although the record is very clear that we are working with the engineer and we're not objecting to replacement of the bulkhead should the structural engineer recommend that. The other thing I respectfully point out in that regard, subject to the ultimate consideration of this board, which as you know, I have the ultimate confidence in, is I'm not sure that in of a CB of this time, a proper consideration would involve removal of bulkheads and things of that nature. I think that in addition to our own expert, there are other town departments, the town engineering department, the public who we have and who we would work with to address any considerations of the bulkhead. The only other comment that I would have with regard to those letters you received is with regard to the request for a deed restriction. careful about this because I'm not seeking so much for my client as I am for Attorney Fallon. My clients are absolutely committed to not allowing this property now or in the future to be used for any dwelling purposes. And indeed, if you make that as a condition of approval, as you've done many times in the past, that would be recorded on the land records because the variance has to be recorded on the land records and would provide enforcement. It just seems to me that as you've done in the past, that's the proper precedent. The only thing I worry about, and this is more me talking than my clients, is I don't know again about conditioning approvals based upon deed restrictions. And I know the chair and others are well aware of the law that talks about, you know, who handles deed restrictions and the like. Having said all that, I don't want to in any way undercut the thought or the fact that we are not planning to use that as a residence and we will abide by any condition that you impose that you think is appropriate. Yeah, and you said deed restriction, although that would be establishing some new territory, but as they say, that's up to the board. So by way of summary and in conclusion, and we thank you for your patience in listening to this, to our neighbors, if it's going to allow us to construct a much more attractive and usable structure on this property that will be zoning compliant except for the variances we seek and FEMA compliant. I would also say that the underpinnings of the application satisfy the requirements of the Connecticut general statutes in that we do have hardship here based upon the current location of the structure and are trying to maintain it. And what we propose to do with regard to the limited utilization of the upper area, again, subject to the conditions that you would normally with the purpose intended of the regulations and your own previous consideration of such requests. So please answer any questions you might have and very much appreciate your efforts to keep.
I lost Kevin. I think he's just still muted. Sorry, I was still muted. I had a note that was, told me I was giving background noise, sorry. Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Does anyone have questions for Attorney Fallon? Yes, Jane.
So the two parking spaces are both under the building that are required. And then the space that's between the building, the garage and the street. That's, you could squeeze two little cars there, but it's less, it seems like it's less than a standard parking space. So I'm just worried that a car is gonna, if someone pulls a car in there, it's gonna hang out onto the Fairfield Beach Road. No?
Yeah, no, two responses to that. I think, one, you're correct. We do have the required two parking spaces under the building.
Right.
Second, point out that this is not going to be utilized by anybody but Mr. and Mrs. Bloomingdale. So it's not, we're gonna have people coming and going, etc. They're gonna use it as a home office. And the third thing I would point out, and I know you've looked at the property.
Yeah.
The driveway main property, if will, the sound side of the property is, I don't want to, it's enormous. In my experience, compared so we don't, we don't see based upon the physical attributes of the property and most importantly, our intended use of the structure, that there'll be any problem with.
Okay, well, then that leads me to my next question, which is, I know you're locating this proposed building right on the same footprint as the one that's coming down. But as long as the other one's coming down, why wouldn't you pull it farther away from the bulkhead and closer to the street?
We wanted to respect the street setback. At the end of the day, we made a determination that, again, based upon what I've observed from the and we prefer to maintain the street setback than start trying to push the building up towards the street.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
You have a question?
It was going along with what Jane was saying. It seems the right side of the property is a little bit longer than the street than the side that you why wouldn't you consider placing it on the right side from the bulkhead?
We looked at a lot of options, but we consulted with our neighbors. We're more comfortable with having the structure remain in the location where it had been in the past. We felt that functioned very well in terms of ingress and egress with regard to the bulkhead. But the neighbors' preference was that we, they liked it where it was, although they didn't necessarily like the condition of it, to say the least.
Is there, I mean, is there any concern that when the time comes that you have to build the bulkhead that all of a sudden it's no longer three point nine and it's like, you know, three feet because of their building of the bulkhead and then you have to come back and ask for forgiveness?
No, it's a good question, and the answer is we were very, very here, that should we have to replace the bulkhead, that that one extra foot landward would be more than sufficient to take care of that. And we're very confident and comfortable that's the case. Having said that, we're not going to construct anything, any bulkhead that is not consistent with the variance we're asking for. And in that circumstance, which we don't think would occur because we've carefully analyzed that with the engineer, we come back to you before we'd ask, we wouldn't be asking but we don't anticipate that's going to happen because that's been carefully examined.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead, Jane.
This is just because I don't, I'm not, I have a question about how the bulkheads are located. Is the possibility that the bulkhead can be built farther away from the house? I mean, who determines exactly where the bulkhead limits are?
If the, if has to be replaced, and again, we're working with the structural engineer. You, the only way you could really replace it according to the structural engineer was you'd have to move it like one foot. Now, I'm not an engineer, but you certainly couldn't push it back into the creek. You couldn't, you couldn't build it any further from where it is now in terms of the land.
Because that's the property line. That's the, because it's the limit of the property line.
I would think that's correct.
So the property line is not to the center of the creek. It's to the edge of the bulkhead. Is that right?
Correct. That's my understanding. And then you have the EEP issues and such. Again, I don't want to get beyond my expertise, but I do know, we, I do know that if we were to replace, have to replace the bulkhead, it can't go near the creek. It has to come maybe a foot landward, which is why we requested the variance that we did.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Terry, did you have a question? Or Brian?
Yeah, can I jump in?
Yeah.
Just very quickly, I have some experience with bulkhead replacement and seawall replacement. Have you referenced earlier, Attorney Fallon, the relation with your immediate neighbor, your client's immediate neighbor? Has there been consideration made of replacing the full length of that bulkhead for the two properties? Both for security and cost management? I know that clients can be difficult.
Yeah, no, I haven't spoken to Mr. Rizzio's client. I don't know what they're considering. But I do know it is that, you know, if we need to replace our bulkhead based upon our engineer's input, we'll do that, and that's why we anticipated potentially having to do that and ask for the variance. I can't speak to what the condition of their bulkhead is or what their plans are. But, you know, if it came about that we need to replace our bulkhead and they need to replace theirs, then I agree with you, Commissioner, very much that some coordination and perhaps shared cost would be in everybody's benefit. And as you can see from the exchange of letters relationship with our, that's dialogue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, before I open it up, I just wanted to point out, Attorney Fallon, you've mentioned this, but we did receive letters that the board did receive, one from Becky Bunnell. And some of them, some of these letters, and you characterize them, I think accurately, they're in support, but a little bit, a little bit opposition or requesting certain conditions such as the bulkhead and deed restriction. So it's kind of a mixed bag, but I wanted to make sure that the record does reflect that we received these. As I said, Bucky Bunnell sent one, which is part of our record. Donna Gower sent one, just part of our record. As did Richard Machowski sent one as well, and
And I just wanted to again emphasize, Mr. Chairman, we don't consider those letters or are we opposed to the replacement as an engineering matter? That's something we need to do. We just were hopeful that you wouldn't impose a condition of approval mandating it with Technocom. My clients have no objection. with Technocom. My clients have no, um, objection to restricting the property's use, uh, with regard to determine whether I can approve recorded energy as part of this variance is enough or appropriate, or whether you want to delve into the question of deed restrictions. But it doesn't, we have no objection to the concept that there should be some land uh, prohibition of any conversion of this, uh, home office to a dwelling.
Uh, so yeah, that's why I presented them before I opened up the board because it was a mixed bag. Um, but now I want to open this up to anyone that was to speak in, in favor of the applications which are on our uh, video here or on the call list. Anyone in that category? Okay, is there anyone in opposition? Is there anyone on the call in or here that, uh, wants to speak in opposition to this application? All right, okay. Uh, hearing none, thank you for your comments, Attorney Fallon, and
Kevin, I think that there's somebody on the
There's somebody on the line trying to get across.
Yes, hello?
Yes, this is Chairman Coin. Who's this?
Okay, this is Dick Mahusky. Um, I wrote, I wrote one of, one of the letters and I just wanted to
James, help, help, help.
Sir, could you, uh, could you say your name again? Mr. Machowski, right? Uh, Matt? Emmeline, can we get him back on or?
Can you not hear him?
Coin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, then I'm calling in on the, on the audio only.
Yes.
Um, so I'm Dick Mahusky and, and I did, I did write a letter about this application. I am in favor of the application. I would just like to take a brief opportunity to recap two, uh, considerations. I'm certainly confident that the Bloomingdales will not establish a dwelling unit in this structure. But a future owner may have other ideas. So what I'm suggesting is if you approve this application, and I'm not conversant with the legalities of it, but in my simple mind, having a deed restriction would, uh, prevent future owners of this structure from making any moves to either above board or surreptitiously establish a dwelling unit there. Um, my second, my second item is that Attorney Fallon categorizes the bulkhead replacement as a future contingency. And notwithstanding the engineer's opinion, as he, as he just stated, um, looking at the bulkhead, it's obvious that it is well past its useful life. And building a new substantial structure so close to this failing bulkhead is a folly that would in short order have the new structure slide off into Pine Creek. I believe the replacement of the bulkhead is necessary now. A proper bulkhead will prevent future, future erosion of the site, which would then compromise the integrity of the structure and its foundation system. And I recommend that you condition approval of these variances, um, upon the existing bulkhead being replaced. And I would further note that establishing the new bulkhead's top of wall elevation at 8.5 feet NAVD 1988 would be a prudent course of action. And I strongly recommend that they do that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, is there anyone else in opposition or comment on this application?
Yes, this is Becky Bunnell. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Ms. Bunnell.
Um, I also was one of the ones who wrote a letter and I'd just like to, um, explain a little bit more about, um, my request also that we condition this on a new bulkhead. And to be perfectly honest, the new bulkhead in my mind is actually needed for the next, uh, item on your docket more because I believe the that bulkhead is actually more deteriorated than the one we're talking about right now. The one we're talking about now is in what I'd consider, uh, just barely okay structure, but uh, the next one that we're gonna be talking about is, in my mind, uh, deteriorates to the point where we definitely need a new bulkhead. And so I'm thinking, if you're gonna build a new bulkhead, build it for both. The other reason why I'm, I'm strongly supporting a new bulkhead is this is one of the narrowest points of the Fairfield Beach Peninsula. And in my, uh, admittedly uneducated, uh, mind about how storms work, it is the most likely to be either breached or have significant amounts of sand wash over from the sound side in, right across the road into the creek, if you have a very low bulkhead, which this is. And we've seen right now that Pine Creek is filling up, even though we did dredge this section, it has already filled back up and there's a huge sandbar um, pretty much right, um, even with these two properties. And this would potentially, if you were to have a big storm and have, and, and this, and to be fair, the property that is across the street from this, the, the, the house that was built, that this, uh, garage is now being asked to be built for, um, has already lowered their, uh, base elevation by about a foot and a half versus where it was when, uh, before the house was built. So this is prime for having, uh, a big storm wash sand from the sound side straight across the lowered elevation of the house, straight across the road and straight across now that this is, this garage is being elevated, straight across, um, into the creek and filled up the creek to the point where no one along the creek side can get any boats out, which is a fairly significant thing in my mind for this whole area and would impact multiple property owners. So that's my request for why I'm asking for a slightly higher bulkhead. And I know we'd have to work with DEEP because it's not the town's call, but I would strongly recommend that the town work closely with DEEP to really understand the hydrodynamic issues of a big storm coming into this particularly narrow section of the beach road. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bunnell. And just so you know, the next item that has been continued to September, just for your information.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, no, that's all right. Anyone else to comment on this application? And call in? Anyone else? Emmeline, is there anyone else?
I don't see anybody else.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Fallon, you wish to, you've kind of addressed those already, but
Yeah, without I just want to emphasize again, the, the, the Bloomingdales have been very sensitive and take very, uh, seriously situation with regard addition of the bulkhead. It would be silly for them not to. That's why they retained, uh, a very reputable structural engineer. That's why the structural engineer is involved with regard to this. Uh, the last thing they would want, as, as was pointed out, I think by Ms. Bunnell and, and, and the prior speaker, would be to, you know, to have a bulkhead that lacked integrity that could cause problems. But I think, number one, we've investigated that, that investigation is still ongoing. And if, if the structural engineer, uh, indicates or recommends replacement of the bulkhead, then we would do it. The second thing is, is I think Ms. Bunnell kind of alluded to, we have town agencies, uh, the Public Works Department and the Engineering Department, uh, that, you know, that have responsibilities and, and for that. And, and we certainly would work with them, but I think it's really kind of within their bellywip to examine, along with a structural engineer, uh, hired by the property owner, whether a bulkhead needs to be and that leads to my final point somewhat redundantly. But respectfully, I, I suggest to you that that's not within the proper statutory jurisdiction of the ZBA to start conditioning on technical engineering issues involving bulkheads, their removal or not, when, you know, as was pointed out by the last speaker, there is a question, you know, and each bulkhead condition is different, what the EEP sentiments would be. So I hope you won't tread into those waters. But having said that, the clients have shown, even by the very variance they request, uh, a, a, a strong commitment to making sure that whatever needs to be done with the bulkhead, based upon input from the engineer, who I'm sure is relying on input from his colleagues at the Town Engineering Department, we will do. And as far as the, uh, the, uh, restrictive covenant, that's, I, I've made, I just don't want to make objection to a to, uh, use of that accessory structure. It just strikes me that based upon legal considerations and your own precedent, the better way to enforce that land use restriction is through a condition of approval rather than attempting to mandate a deed restriction. But I thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. And that closes, uh, zoning board of appeals, uh, board of appeals for August 6th, 2020. Does anyone on the board need a break before we vote? Ryan, Terry, you guys good?
Good to go.
Good, good.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, um, we'll go right into our voting if everyone else could there, so we don't have any background. Um, like we've done in the past, present the, uh, the matter for consideration and I would entertain a motion to approve and whoever's gonna move to approve, if you just give your name and say, I move to approve, whoever's gonna second, if you just give your name and say, uh, I second that. Uh, so the first matter for consideration is number three, as both number one and number two are continued, and that is 1149 Fairfield Beach Road. Mr. Graziano is the owner, presented his application, uh, and it is for, uh, constructing elevated deck for a generator. Entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve, Brian Avalone.
Okay, Brian, uh, has moved to approve. There a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane.
Either one.
Discussion?
This seems sort of a straightforward application.
Great.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Objection by the neighbors.
All right. Let's, uh, vote. Uh, Jane, how do you vote?
Yes, Jane says yes.
Okay, uh, Brian? Hi?
Brian says yes.
Uh, Terry?
Terry says yes.
Faith?
Faith.
And I say yes. Mr. Graziano, that's been approved. Number four, 189 Adley Road, uh, petition of Miroslav, uh, Dovin for variance to allow a shed and covered porch to remain. The work already done. Uh, I entertain a motion to approve.
Brian moves.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, discussion?
I don't see any reason why, uh, it should not be approved. Um,
Can I just make a comment? Over and over and over, we have applications where the applicant is told by the building department that they don't need a permit, but then they're never reminded that they still have to follow zoning regulations. You know, how do we make sure that that doesn't keep happening over and over again?
It's a good question, I guess.
Cross the hall from each other, you know, yeah.
Could the building department actually have said that? Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah. Yeah, it happens over and over again. I'm just, just a comment.
Um, but in, in this particular matter, the, the thing is kind of that in that backyard and
Right.
you know, down the hill, no one, no one can see it, even the lower neighbors can't see this.
The shed on the side, but, you know.
I agree. For vote, uh, Jane?
Jane says yes.
Uh, Brian?
Yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Faith?
Faith, yes.
And I say yes. Approved, number five, 392 South Benson Road. Petition of, uh, Ms. Petch, uh, to, uh, construct a one-story, one-car garage. Um, this was, you know, to fill in the old garage, put it over, uh, to the side a little bit, and she needed a variance. And I entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Terry, yes, okay. Is there a second?
Brian seconds.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, discussion?
Uh, I would, I would absolutely say that this is a reasonable request. Um, it alleviates a pretty serious problem with the applicant's property. And, uh, I actually think it's gonna look really nice.
This is, this is one that's a, a unique characteristic of the property. So I think we need to give it an approval.
Yep, all right. For the vote, Jane?
Jane says yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Faith, yes.
Yes for me. Approved, number six, 80 Newton Street. Petition of, uh, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Dober and Mr. Becker presented this to construct the second floor and rear two-story addition on Newton Street. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Brian moves.
Okay, Brian moved. Is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. You're gonna have to move faster, Jane, to be um, well, discussion?
Again, this is like, this is one of those unique properties, so it's tied to the shape and of the property.
When you look at it, it looks like there's a lot of stuff going on and a lot of variance is being requested, but it, uh, it's, it's all based upon the the, the property shape and where the existing structure is located.
Right. And it's a modest proposal.
For the vote, Jane?
Jane says yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Faith, yes.
I say yes. Okay. Mr. Becker, thank you, uh, applicant, uh, few owners, I should say. Um, and, uh, number seven, 164 Warwick Avenue. Uh, Patrick Nellies, uh, presented this. It's to construct an open front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
Jane moves to approve.
Faith, second.
Faith, second. Brian was shut out.
I'm staying out for the remainder. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it to the rest.
Discussion?
I, I will state that this, uh, is a very reasonable use of the space and I think it'll make the house look a lot nicer and keep their kids from falling or jumping off of uh, what could be an impediment now or a risk.
Great. Bring it for vote, Jane?
Jane says yes.
Jane?
Brian says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Faith, yes.
Yes, that passes. Number eight, 44 Morning Avenue. Uh, petition of Kevin and Jennifer Ayers, and it's to rebuild an existing front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
Faith.
Terry?
Terry moved. Is there a second?
Faith, seconds.
Thank you, Faith. Okay, discussion?
I think it enhances the curb appeal of this house. It's a very nice application.
Yeah, covered from up as well. Uh, all right, pick your vote, Jane?
Yes.
Ryan? Brian?
Yes.
Terry?
Terry, yes.
Yes.
Um, yes, that passes. Number nine, 1600 Melville Avenue. The owner is Glenn Fass, but it's for the future owners. Um, they presented, Ms. Miller. Okay, entertain a motion to approve its, uh, for construction, floor addition and open front porch.
Jane moves to approve.
Brian, I'll second. There's no one else.
All right, that's our discussion. I mean, it's going to make it into the, uh, rest of that neighborhood.
Right.
When you go drive down, that, that little house does stick out, a little different than the other ones. Make it more consistent.
I agree.
Sweet.
Oh, Jane?
Jane says yes.
Brian says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Faith, yes.
I say yes. That has passed. Uh, the last one is number 10. 01-2102 Fairfield Beach Road. It's an LLC. Uh, the Bloomingdales are members of that LLC that own the property. Attorney Fallon presented the application. I entertain a motion to approve this with the following proposed con- condition. Maintain this, uh, structure, the subject of the application, as approved condition, maintain this structure, the subject of the application as approved and to not change it to a residence in the future. With that condition, which was suggested, I'd entertain the motion to approve to get us going on discussion.
Brian moves to approve with condition.
Second, Jane seconds.
Jane second? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, let's have discussion.
I have a question. Do we even have the authority to put a deed restriction on any property?
It's a great question. I'm, I'm not, I don't want to give legal advice to board as a chairman, but I could, I could say that my thoughts are that the ZBA not be delving into deed restrictions. I think what we do on occasions is, and why I propose the condition and why I think Attorney Fallon proposed that condition, is that we have done that. And my thoughts on that is even that might be putting a condition on how to use the property may be in trouble if we just came out of left field and proposed it. But I think there's a little bit stronger argument that it's that, that condition that we suggested be maintained when it's offered by the applicant. And it kind of puts them in a weird position to then down the road, claim that the board did something improper. So I think when that condition such as that that relates to the use is offered by the applicant, I think we're on stronger, the board, future boards, the town is on stronger force that. I don't think we should be getting into deed restrictions. The whole set of laws, nothing to do with zoning board law.
Okay. And can I ask another question? Hypothetically, in the future, if this property changes hands and the next owners want to consider making this an accessory dwelling, they still have the right then to apply for a variance to this condition? Is that correct?
Yes. Oh, these people, the Bloomingdales could apply for a variance in the future. Again, they'd be hard pressed, but yes, no, that it would be coming back to the board and, you know, this old variance with that condition hypothetically would be there.
Right.
This variance runs with the land. It's on the land records. So they'd be, they'd have to come up with some really strong compelling reasons, I think, to probably change a condition from a prior board.
All right, but it's okay, because I think the history of deed restrictions in Fairfield is a little dicey.
Deed restrictions are difficult all around, whether it's in Fairfield or the state of Connecticut.
Right, but there's some, okay.
I had another, I had another question on this. The, as far as the bulkhead is concerned, I'm the last one that likes conditions or such. But is it reasonable to request the report of the structural engineer prior to the commencement of construction of the unit without placing a condition on any other condition regarding the bulkhead on the construction or the variance?
Uh, that's, I think that my opinion, that's probably splitting some hairs, you know, requiring it have a signed off approval from a structural engineer. It's no different than requiring the building of a bulkhead, you know. I don't
That's an engineer.
We could get into how to build the house and dictate footing size and dictate wall heights and dictate, you know, ceiling heights, you know, if they go through the rest of the, you know, approvals of the town, and it, it fits and everyone's looking at it. And since where it is, is everyone will be looking at it, EEP as well. I don't think it's all our job to talk about land use regulations and then put building code. It'd be like, it'd be like completely requiring some type of a building, a different building code or making sure they comply with a particular code, you know.
That doesn't seem like it's under the ZBA's authority to do that.
We're to see if this property is unique, whether they are entitled to a variance of this particular restriction on the use and the setup of property.
Yeah.
How, the comments from the people are great, and I'm sure the Bloomingdales are looking at it all. And the last thing they want is to invest this money and have it fall into the creek.
And be careful what you ask for, because if you get that and something goes wrong, then it, you know, can bite us back. So it's better not to get to that.
Oh, any other discussion?
Um, I had a question about getting back to it as not being allowed to be used accessory apartment. Isn't, don't accessory apartments have to be connected to the main house?
No.
Yep. Yeah, this wouldn't be an accessory apartment. It would be a second dwelling. So yes, an accessory apartment, an apartment needs to be in the primary structure. Accessory apartments are not permitted in the Beach District.
So is, in the Beach District, are they allowed to have second dwellings on the same one property?
No, you don't need a variance unless it predates the zoning rec, or the zoning, the establishment of the zoning regulations. Some cases there are two houses on, in some cases, actually three houses on one lot. Just like in any district, you would need a waiver to either modify it or establish it as a second dwelling. So yes, they would need to come back to this board to convert it to a second dwelling.
So, so if a future person illegally put a kitchen in there, they would have to come to us and ask for either a variance before they do it or forgiveness after they do it?
Correct. Either way, then we need a waiver to convert that to a dwelling.
So basically, this building doesn't need a deed restriction. It already is not allowed.
It's not permitted, correct.
The condition is just a voluntary condition by the homeowners to appease the neighbors. Right?
Referred to these conditions of belt and suspenders. Don't, don't need it, but it makes peace and it makes them coming even and asking for future considerations that much harder. That's the way I look. That's all. And truly the way I feel about these conditions. I don't mind them because that's the, that's the purpose. It's to appease them and prevent them, appease neighbors and prevent them from coming back. All right, take a vote, Jane?
Jane says yes with those conditions as described.
Well, are we, I have a question. Are we voting on it for the condition or for the whole piece?
The piece with the condition that was actually proposed by Attorney Fallon, that I incorporated in the motion.
Okay, so this is the final vote?
Yes.
I had, I want the two we voted, I wanted to say that I still have concern about it being placed close to the Pine Creek setback. And setbacks are there for a reason. And that we don't know when the hurricane's coming in, less than four feet. I just can't understand when they have a seven foot on the other side of the property, they have seven feet more than the side that they're placing the house on. And they should easily set it back two feet on the other side, as well as they state, they stated that there's plenty of parking on the other main house. So a concern about the placement of the house.
Yeah, I know. And, you know, they wanted to keep it over to one side. And that's another concern of the neighbors to be able to look through from on the other side of the creek or looking out to the creek.
That's a really narrow part of the road. And so if you put any structure that much closer to the road, you create a canyon effect as you make your way through that part of the street. So that's why they're holding the existing setback.
Right. But if they placed it on the other side of the property, they have seven feet more according to the survey than either on. Longer piece.
I think they're trying to be, they ask and appease the neighbors.
Faith, you're suggesting that they push it further west?
Correct. That side is 62 feet and the other side is 54 and a half. And so you have an extra seven feet.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Right.
Or even partially. I mean, I don't know what they're doing with that side piece on one side.
Well, another thing that, here's a question I don't have the answer to, but if they slide it over as you're suggesting, then the two driveways are directly across from each other, across Fairfield Beach Road from each other. And I don't know off the top of my head if that is a about the two driveways being directly across. Matt, maybe you can tell me?
No, there is no regulation that requires a driveway to be in front or next to or, I mean, I would say that it could be a hazard, but it's not something in my jurisdiction.
Ryan and Terry, any comments? No.
No comments from Terry Keegan.
More discussion on that or? Faith, is there more discussion on that?
No, I stated my
Okay.
3.9 feet in hurricane could go very quickly.
So can, so can 10 feet and 11 feet and 12 feet.
No, 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 not as quickly.
And 22 feet, like my house in Vermont, 22 feet went pretty damn quick.
I think you can tell people not to run with scissors, you know, but the, but, but people are gonna still do it.
Well, that's why we have zoning rules and that's setbacks are for.
Yeah.
Let's go to bring to a vote. It was, the motion before us, the vote is for approval with the condition that's set forth as suggested by Attorney Fallon. And I repeated and Brian moved and Jane seconded. And with that, Jane, what's your vote?
Jane says yes.
Brian?
Brian says yes.
Terry?
Terry says yes.
Faith?
No.
I say yes. That has passed board one. Thank you. Sorry for the delay, everyone. Hopefully soon, it'll be much easier. I don't think so in September. I think we'll be back at doing this. So come on up, get better Wi-Fi. So when the power goes out for the big hurricane season, which is very aggressive this year, I hear, we can do this without issues. All right, thank you.
Everybody get a generator. We can approve our variances.
Okay, all right. Take care, everyone. Thanks. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Emma Lyon.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.